I'm on research.
What's his name?
Rocky.
Hi, Rocky.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, well, welcome, everyone. I'm, um, we're gonna do showcase before.
Whatever you want to do, if you want to do the minutes and then.
All right, we'll do.
Get your.
Let's do the approval of the previous meeting, December first minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
No.
Second? Okay. So, is there any discussion? It was, it was Sam and Lisa.
Yep.
And then any discussion on the minutes or edits? None? Okay. All favor of approving the minutes as it is.
Sorry, I got it.
Okay. All right. Um, before we move on to the other agenda items, we have a very special guest this evening of the four-legged furry persuasion. Officer Taitula has brought Rocky, the amazing adorable dog.
He's been there.
Yes. And do we want to share about how we've all been asking him to be amazing?
Yeah.
I know he's been getting around town. I think we've all seen him. He's in the paper, on Facebook.
Yep.
He's like, you know, living a better life than all of us, so.
Type two, let take the lead on that. You talked about, um, we do have continued training going on. We'll give you a little bit of information on that. Overall, it's been a wonderful adjustment. And just so that everybody knows, Rocky's birthday is on November 8.
Monday, this coming Monday.
Oh.
On January 9th, he will be one.
And we're hoping to do some type of celebration for that for our families and maybe doing like, um, you know, if people wanted to donate to some of the area, um, shelters and things like that for immunizm, we actually sort of encourage that.
Awesome. That's great.
Yep. So, we've been, we've been training, we wear from three to four days a week, um, usually Monday through Thursday, and we go to Golden Opportunities for Independence, and that's in Walpole. And that's where Rocky came from. They breed this particular dog, the English Cream Golden Retriever, and this organization not only breeds them, but they train them to be service dogs. Uh, so, they, they train the regular service dogs that will go with the handlers that, that need them, uh, but they also help police officers train them to be what they call a community resource dog. So, he's, he was the 26th, um, community resource dog from Golfe, and I believe there's three or four more that are getting ready to get one as well from Massachusetts. Oh, he really likes you.
Maybe it's my credit card.
I don't know, he just keeps going right over there. Um, so, right now, he is preparing to take his canine good citizen test, and that'll be at some point this month. And then, once he passes that, hopefully, we pass that, our training will drop down to two days a week. And that'll be for the next, probably, two months, month and a half to two months, at which time he'll take his public access test. Uh, and then, if he passes that, we'll be down to just one day a week, which will be Tuesdays, and that's his search and rescue training day. So, he's getting cross-trained for search and rescue, so God forbid any missing people, um, in town. So, he would be, in addition to our other canine that we have, who, um, Blasco, who also does the search and rescue, so if, if Blasco's not available, um, Rocky would be able to. Um, training, he doesn't like the gentle leader. Um, and that's another thing, the, the gentle leader, um, I've gotten some comments, like, if he's a comfort dog, how come he's got a muzzle? Not a, not a muzzle, um, it just, it keeps him from pulling away. Um, it's the same thing that a horse would wear. It doesn't restrict him from breathing, eating, drinking, barking, which thankfully, he doesn't really do. Um, but, he pretends that it bothers him, but he's been wearing the thing for nine months now.
It's a good outfit.
But he's, from my perspective, I think that he's been doing really good things. I know the kids at Burgess love him, um, the staff that have met him seem to love him. Um, I know he's helped out a couple of kids already, um, and it's just, it's, it's an amazing thing to just watch him work. Like, he, he takes the initiative, he sees somebody that's, you know, kind of down, and he pulls meat towards them, and it's, it's amazing to watch him next to somebody. Um, but, for a, like, almost one year old, he's a pretty calm dog, and that's, that's what we need. Um, but, yeah, training, training is good. I can't wait to, for the canine good citizen to get that and drop our training down to two days a week, because it's been killing us to not spend more time here. But our training is in the mornings, and we try and get back here for around noon time, sometimes it's earlier, sometimes it, it goes a little bit later. But we do try and come here every day in the afternoon. Fridays, there's no training, so I'll be here all day with him tomorrow.
Awesome.
Um, Monday, we took the day off from training for his birthday, so that we could be here. I know a lot of kids were, were getting excited. I, I think some classrooms were trying to plan a, a mini-party for him. So, he'll be here for that.
What does a typical day look like when you are in the school? Like, tomorrow, what will tomorrow?
It's, it varies. Sometimes, we don't make it out of the lobby. Um, and that's.
How much learning time are we losing with Rocky, really? Because I wouldn't be able to concentrate on anything but just talking.
Um, but, yeah, sometimes I'll, I'll walk in, and I'll still have my backpack on, and hour, hour and a half later, still sitting in the lobby, just kids that are going by, staff members that are going by. Um, I mean, it's, it's hard to not come up to him and pet him.
Or the other way around.
Oh, no. Oh. Um, but, we've, uh, we've visited several classrooms already, um, kind of talked about him, made the rounds, let everybody come up, and it, he's such a calm dog that.
He's rocky.
There, there, I said, he'll have 15 or 20 kids that will run up to him, and it doesn't faze him one bit.
Yeah.
Um, he'll, eventually, after about a minute of 15 or 20 kids petting him, he'll just plop down to the ground.
Yep.
Um, and it's.
He's really been, you know, probably had, actually, a couple of situations where children
have been having a real challenge in time, um, and he has been tremendously helpful. So, instead of de-escalating the situation, getting everybody calm, um, it's, it's remarkable to watch.
But I, I think, I think it's gonna be a positive impact for Burgess and the rest of the community. Um, we've, we've helped out patrol on a couple of halls already, and, you know, we'll be doing more than that, uh, more of that. We were at the senior center, it was yesterday, for their talk of the town.
Yeah.
So, he, uh, he did very well there. But, yeah, the, the last few weeks, um, with training, whatever it was, I, I'm pretty sure it was me, I, I finally got a hold of how to train him. Um, he started listening a lot better.
So, surely, you was gonna have to pass this test.
He, he was fully trained, I was not. Yep. Um, but, yeah, I mean, right away, like, the first day that I got him, I, I brought him here for a moment, and he instantly had, had a couple of students coming up to him, and, um, but, yep, he's just a, a walking sack of potatoes. Yep, he just, he lays down, he, he knows when he needs to work, and plays when there's really nobody around.
Certainly, the highlight of this meeting, I think, is to all of us. Does anyone have any questions for Rocky? Any? Happy birthday. It's his birthday weekend, he's probably.
Yep.
Yeah.
Want a treat?
Any response to treats at the festival?
Oh, yes.
Want a bit? You want a pick of that?
What other kind of community programs are you gonna enjoy?
Uh, so, I had spoken with, um, Amy, yeah, well, about getting him involved in some of their reading programs as well with the kids. Um, and, moving forward, I want to try and get some programs throughout the town, like, we, we do coffee with a cop, you know, we can try coffee with Rocky, or cocoa with Rocky, or, you know, something, just to, just to keep him in the, in the community, um, keep people informed on his progress and what he's been doing. Uh, I have some stuff lined up with the senior center, going to, um, the, the senior living, just housing, um, to participate in their programs, and just kind of duffkell off of, off of theirs. But, yeah, I mean, we're, we make appearances in, in stores, the, the big box stores, and some of the mom and pop shops, just, just getting him familiar with the community, and the community familiar with him. Uh, but I'd, I'd love to do more, more programs at Burgess. It's, it's tough right now, being gone three, four days a week, but hopefully, by the end of this month, that's, that's all been a change. Huh?
Hmm.
Yep. Yeah, and he, he gets very, very excited when we walk through the doors here. Um, if, if there are kids out of recess, he's glued to the door, just wants to get out there. Uh, he, he definitely loves kids a lot more than adults, and, and that's, that's, it's funny.
Thank you for bringing us here.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
We're glad to see you. Thank you. Awesome.
See you, bye.
Thank you, Rocky.
Hi, Rocky. Good morning.
Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rocky.
Doesn't want them.
He really wants to like. Hey, where do you go from there?
Hi.
Well, we will move on to some less interesting things, um, starting with the financial report. If you'd like to.
Less pleasant.
Way less than.
Less pleasant.
As we, uh, as we move on, things are starting to tighten up, uh, you see, we're about 33%, expended, uh, as we go forward. Uh, if you've noticed in the, uh, financial statement, we have, uh, some issues, uh, that we've talked about, and some issues going forward, namely, uh, or utility issues always a part of the problem. Uh, and then, the, uh, special ed, uh, something that we're going to tackle as the months go on. Uh, so, we're keeping an eye on it, and we, uh, have some ideas on how to, uh, basically, uh, help with those situations, uh, but things, we, we watch them closely, and we continue to watch them closely as we go around the corner into this new year.
I'll chime in a little. Um, Larry is here, and thank you for coming, Larry, your finance committee liaison, once again, yay. And Larry and I didn't meet before the holidays, so that I could start talking to him, as we have been talking for a couple of months, of the problems we're having this year, never mind next year. So, um, we did meet a little bit, and I certainly went through some of the explanation on some of the challenges this year, both, uh, district tuitions and some in-house needs and utilities. And as I've mentioned, for a couple of months, I'm not feeling comfortable that we're gonna get through the end of this year with the budget. We are gonna use every grant opportunity we have. We have some entitlement monies there that we have not spoken for yet, but we know we're gonna need it to get through. But I did share with, um, Larry, as we talked, that it's very likely we're gonna need to submit, uh, uh, an article for additional funds just to get through this year. So, served that up to him, for him to share with his team. Um, I will probably draft one for the next meeting, because usually, the deadline for articles comes in February-ish, so I'll, I'll draft one just for you folks to be comfortable and know, um, what I will recommend. In June, there's always a special town meeting that immediately follows the annual. That is a good time to put it on, feeling comfortable that the town has always supported us in the past, and we did keep the budget very low this year. We made that clear. Finance committee remembers, even in May, that we were already starting to feel a little bit of discomfort, but we went forward with that 2% budget. So, it's not a surprise to anyone, um, so I do believe we get support. So, feeling pretty confident that we will be supported if we needed to ask for more to get through this year, and there is a, a free cash balance that certainly could support what we need for this year. If we put that special town meeting on in June, I, I, I feel no need to ask the town to hold a special town meeting just for this. If we wait till the June special town meeting, then we're very close to the end. We know for sure what we need to get through, and if what we asked for on the article, we think we can get through for less, we can on town meeting floor lower that ask. So, that would be my suggestion, that we put the article in, get that done next month.
Regularly.
And, right.
Is there a risk that it could be too late at that point, that we will run out of funds?
There is, and we're gonna go with kind of a, I, I think we should trust our finance committee, because they have been very supportive in the past, and the two other times in my 20 years that we had an article similar, they were supported by both the board of selectmen and finance committee, and we did end up lowering when we got closer, in one case, just withdrew. So, um, I will, when we submit the article, probably ask for a brief meeting with the finance folks then, to get their feel. If I feel any hesitation at all, I'll come back and say, there's some things here that we might not be able to do for the rest of the year that we normally would, but if I get a good feel, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with that comfort. Yep.
We'll be talking.
So, we'll keep you posted on that. That's this year, very quickly, we're gonna start talking about how that is likely to impact next year, and start that process, though.
Yes. Okay.
Got a question?
Yep.
Uh, I'm still learning how to read these, so if I'm not reading it correctly.
Yep.
Just let me know. It, to me, it looks like we're actually in a better position than the special ed tuition versus last month. Last month, it looks like you were almost $300,000 over budget for special ed tuition, and now we're down to $172,000.
It, and I don't have last month's with me. If that was the case, it could be because we had not redirected a number of things. And as I explained to Larry, our shortfall this year was in the area of $600,000. We took care of a lot, we took care of a lot of it, but not all. Um, we took care of it in ways of, you remember, you, we, the end of last year, we prepaid some of this year's, so that's gonna start our cliff for next year. We also had a balance in circuit breaker, so I suspect wasn't show, well, there was $200,000 in the circuit breaker revolving fund, that we're gonna take the balance that was there and put that towards the problem. And then, the other thing, I don't think it's encumbered yet, so the other thing in my head is that grant that we, it's on your last page, that foundation expense grant of $100,000, we're gonna need that for either the tuitions or utilities combined, that's what's gonna... So, even if I get this special ed tuition line to look like it's only $50,000 over, we've got utilities problems that we're also dealing with. So, combined, I would share with Larry, I, I think we're gonna be in the range of $200,000 short, but I need a couple more months to know if that's really what we're gonna ask the town for. So, and, and there is one, um, inaccuracy on the cover letter that you're looking at. So, yes, I mean, if, if you look at the trend, the first picture is, at this point in the year, we've already spent 33% of the budget versus last year, only 30, and the year before, 32, and that, I mean, 1% is $120,000, so to have spent that much more and halfway through, the, the numbers down the bottom are inaccurate. I did a quick check, what we have encumbered right now is 63%, so combined, between what's encumbered and what's been spent, is 96%. If you look two years back, that's 69% plus the 32, was only a 91% spent or spoken for at this point in the year. So, those, those add up to be some pretty significant dollars, when we calculate those percentages on your $12 million budget. So, we will keep you posted. Yep.
Um, communications.
So, the only communication in there is the FYI, it's just our response letter. We, we mentioned last night that your teachers, uh, this is a negotiating year for them, so we have received a letter that, the intention to bargain, and we sent the letter back saying, we got it, and we'll be in touch.
Okay, great. Okay. The principal's report.
Thank you, everyone. Um, as you can see, enrollment remains steady at 887. We have had a few, um, recent registrations, so that should increase again for next month. I want to thank Lydia, Lucas, Tarafuri, Mary Rapold, and everyone that helped provide support to our families during the holiday season. It is an all-community effort, um, lots of people participating, and it's just wonderful to be able to carry that tradition on. The Burgess staff, Burgess staff members, once again, participated in the Festival of Giving Trees. Thank you to Jen Mellon for organizing this annual community service project, and thank you to Bob Krilovich and Lucy Colwell for making our holiday concerts successful. It was simply joyful. Um, curriculum instruction and assessment report distributed Friday, December 9th. Um, we are, um, entering the MCAS window, so, um, we will be testing during early April and late May for grades three through six in the areas of ELA and math, as well as grade five, science, technology, and engineering. We have an upcoming professional development day on Friday, um, January 13th, and we're following that menu, um, format that we did that was so successful in October, so we're really pleased with that. You'll see some wonderful department and grade level updates.
Great. Any questions on the principal's report? Some comments? All right, moving on to the superintendent's report.
So, now we get into, yep, which I, I did boldly put under my reporting, I was a financial board, I'm still trying to be kind to Steve, but Steve, Steve is gonna, um, for the most part, Steve is gonna try and take this phone role with it. Kathy and I are certain we're gonna jump in, so that we'll have tea between the three of us. I believe you all received the, probably just in time for Christmas package, but hopefully you didn't open it up until after. Um, so, I, I will kind of, just before we segue to Steve, the package looks similar to what you've seen in the past. The, those first, um, I think eight or nine pages are summary documents that will come back to us for the public hearing. So, those are really your public hearing documents in draft format, in case we have to change anything before. So, we're gonna end up skipping that and going to the detail, um, which is the, the first landscape pages that have gridlines on it, but, yes, you can't get past this summary document without saying, oh, my. Um, so, what we're gonna present to you tonight is a 7.8% increased budget, which is leaps and bounds above anything I recall asking of the town. Um, you will see at the end, half of that, literally a full half, 3% to 3.5% is all on your tuition line items. So, um, there certainly are issues we've been going through, and, and we've had a number of conversations to talk about what, um, is, is caused them. We know we've got to increase mental health issues and a lot of dual diagnoses at both the elementary and secondary level, and, yes, the reminder that your special ed out of district costs in this budget includes secondary students. So, your finance folks know that very well, we will also remind them of that. But, we're gonna try not to harp on that too much, other than that box in the middle that does show the significant trend up for special needs, both in-house and out. So, there's also in-house increases that we'll go through. Um, the only, only chance I have of trying to be Sally Sunshine for a minute tonight is to say, we've gotta go through this, and we have to wait and see what the state is gonna put out for chapter 70 money. Last year, Sturbridge got a, a good decent bump in chapter 70 due to its enrollment in the Student Opportunity Act that is being phased in. So, I'm gonna try and be optimistic that there's gonna be another decent bump in chapter 70 money. Unfortunately, we will not know that until probably the first week in March. We could know the end of February, but a new governor has an extra 30 days to put out their budget. So, inauguration today, time to get down and dirty, we're not gonna get a budget by the end of January the way we often do. So, the process, I think, is gonna be a little more drawn out, so sometimes, we come back to you folks in February, because we've seen state data, and we think we know what might be affordable or not with your town. We are not gonna know that in February, we may not know that by your March public hearing. So, this might be a year that we're voting, or presenting, or taking a vote on a budget in the March public hearing that we fully know, we're gonna continue to have conversations in April and May, um, once we know more where the town stands. Okay? All righty. So, let's get out of Steve.
Okay. Um, we're gonna start off with, uh, the detailed budget, looks like this, so if everyone wants to start on page one, uh, that'll be good, and we'll go, uh, line by line. Uh, if you have a question, we'll shadow out, and then we'll, uh, address it from there. Uh, if you look at the school committee expenses, the total school committee expenses of $14,500, that has not changed significantly or at all, uh, in the past three years, so, uh, that continues to be the same. Uh, the next section is the superintendent's office, which is the, uh, central office, which services all the U of U, uh, 61 schools, as well as ten past work, and the percentages on top are the percentages apportioned to, uh, County Sturbridge based upon enrolling. So, as you can see, there's more, uh, Sturbridge kids in the district than there were last year and the year before. Therefore, more of the central office costs will be apportioned to, uh, this budget.
And that's the budget you all voted in November. Yeah.
Uh, and back from November, you know, there is an additional, uh, position in there, for student support and compliance. Uh, as you can see, the previous years are zeros, and, uh, this year, it's, uh, populated with, uh, your proportion of the, uh, that costs. Uh, taking us down to the total of the 1,000 series line, uh, it's up, uh, from last year, uh, for two reasons. One, uh, increased costs in central office, as well as increased apportionment, uh, based upon your percentage. So, if you want to go to page two, to look at the principal's office, uh, the principal, assistant principal, uh, secretarial salaries, uh, that's up, uh, but only by a slight bit based upon negotiated raises, uh, as we go forward. Uh, the next, uh, three, uh, costs in the principal's office are supplies and other expenses. Uh, there's been no change, uh, in the past two years with that, so we, uh, are doing level funding those areas. Uh, this is the big number, right here. Uh, you'll see that teaching, uh, and on a total budget of, what do you want, $14 million? 14 million, you'll see that 5.3 goes to all these people that, that, uh, that take care of your kids every day. Um, and so, we're talking, at the end of the day, it's, uh, 5.3 million, uh, for teachers, that's inclusive, inclusive of a couple things. One, it's inclusive, inclusive of, um, what we know contractually people will get, that includes step raises, that includes column shifts, things like that, that are built into the, uh, the contract, as well as, uh, we do know of one, um, retirement, uh, so that's built in. Maybe some will come in, uh, which will bring that number down, uh, so we're keeping an eye on that as we go forward. Uh, substitutes, education assistance, substitute line is the same, at $100,000. Uh, you'll see the education assistance at 182, that is down a bit, uh, from last year. So, what happened here is that we classified two education assistants into special ed, uh, so that brought that number down. You'll see the special ed, uh, assistance increase a bit, uh, for those two on the next page.
So, we want to make sure, a, a couple of things, just to go back on your, your teaching salaries, that's the contract it's negotiating this year. So, all the other, the support staff and your administrators, those are locked-in contracts, so we, we've budgeted what the contracts say. We do have a pool of dollars in this line to cover negotiations. You may see some other lines that look like they're level funded for, in the professional staff. That doesn't mean that there are no increases, it means they've maxed out and might not be moving a column or a step, but will transfer out, as we have in the past, once we've negotiated to put whatever. We do have a pool of dollars in this line to cover negotiations. You may see some other lines that look like they're level funded for, in the professional staff. That doesn't mean that there are no increases. It means they've maxed out and might not be moving a column or a step, but will transfer out, as we have in the past, once we've negotiated to put whatever money needs to be on the line. I, I think it was probably just one ed assistant. We, we really have to, and we have these conversations constantly, about what classroom assistants are due to special ed needs versus just general support. So sometimes we have some fluctuation, and it's important to make sure. We want to report the right number for special ed, because state reporting asks us. Then at the same time, we have to keep a maintenance of effort up. Once we start putting certain support on the special ed's area, from the state point of view, they look at that every year to make sure that we are continuing that level, unless there is a decrease in enrollment or a change in, in salaries such as a retirement. So sometimes if a bubble comes up, we have to explain that's why. So we don't wanna put folks in the special ed category if they're not, but on the other hand, we wanna make sure that we're showing maintenance of effort. So this was a position that belonged in the special ed category, and you'll see the special ed line go up in exchange for this one reason.
So we don't have to change the total number of educational assistance?
From right now, today to next year, no. However, today we do have at least one position more that we needed to add in this year due to new student needs. And that in itself would not usually be a budget breaker, but when you put it on top of everything else that's going on, it becomes a challenge.
And then the teaching salaries, so that is, that will change after negotiations?
You, yeah, you'll vote, you'll go through the whole budget process with that, and we'll come back to you probably next September when we've actually set everyone's new pay up. And then we'll know what lines need transfers, and we'll have you folks do the transfers. Any other questions on that, Matt Daddy page?
So the next, the next page here, teaching supplies and materials, no change from previous years. Now we're into this teaching sped category. This is where you will see the most change as far as personnel in hiring in those areas. So these numbers are less static than the rest of the country. For example, special ed teachers, it's a bit lower, and the reason why is we have a couple newer teachers. Their previous year sells, they came in a little bit cheaper. Special education assistants, that was what we were talking about before. We moved the person into there. Tutors, same. Speech and language teacher, again, some newer, newer folks in that category. So a little less expensive than one two and twenty-three. And then contractor services, they are your OTT, psychological, things like that. And they, that is fairly static, but that changes with the leads of the kids as they come in and as they're identified going forward. Supplies and materials, essentially the same. So that is the sped. If we go to page five here. Page five is pretty simple, professional development textbooks, no change at all from previous years. So if we move to page seven.
I just wanna clarify for anybody who might ask. That Go Math may or may not be Go Math. So grades K through five will be piloting a new series. The cost of the pilot is minimal, so we're fine level funding. The, the year after, that might see a slight increase. We are finishing with the previous map. One of the two companies piloting is Go Math, phase two. So we may or may not end up with the same company. But the cost to this budget for math next year is minimal in the year after when we bring on a new series for the bulk. This year, we brought on a new series, the week six. So next year, when we do the rest, there could be some, some increases there.
Okay, I'm sorry, page six, not page seven. Our technology budget.
So those, there, there's the example of your technology specialist, which is a singleton, so that salary looks like it's staying the same. We know we'll, we'll take care of that after negotiations adopt.
Same thing with your library.
Yep, and these relatively don't change from previous year. And the one hundred fifty thousand in hardware that, that tracks to the capital plan, which will pack up.
Should be at the end of your packet unless anybody feels the need to go to it right now, at the end of the packet. We can talk about the technology capital, as well as your general building projects document, I hope, ties. So we'll get there.
And then we have our library services again, you know, singletons here. And no real change from one year to the next, from chapter three to chapter four. And we go to page seven here.
In Chimen, and if we miss, we try after all our years of experience to answer questions before they're asked. If we miss something, or you've got a question we didn't think would be asked, please jump in. Sorry, page seven.
Okay, page seven, guidance. This is kind of the quasi-regular and special ed area, so they kind of do all things for all people. And so we have our guidance counselor salaries, which are actual, our testing materials have gone up.
Yeah, you have to talk about, yes.
I can talk about that, yes. So basically.
I wish that was the only big problem.
Right. Number one, our STAR testing subscription has increased in cost, but we also, for many years, have come in, here, have been sort of piecemealing our online learning support tools. So we've used products called iXL, and those have been coming out of other places in the budget, teaching supplies and materials, software license and whatnot. We now have a program that is directly tied to our STAR testing. It's called Freckle, it's an online learning tool, and it correlates one hundred percent with STAR. So a child will take the STAR assessment, Freckle will actually be at the child's actual level so that they can progress through and make progress that way. So that's one added cost to this that we've taken out of other places that we've funded those subscriptions for over the years. Put it into here, because we feel that it's part and parcel of the same. The other piece is around a four thousand dollar Review 360, which is a social-emotional screening tool that we use, that we were being grant funded for up until this year. So we're looking to move forward with that or a similar type of tool. So that's the explanation there. Questions?
As we come down to the, the bottom of this section here, we see the total two thousand series. The two thousand series is a designation made by the Department of Ed for instructional services. So these are all the services that go into teaching kids on a daily basis. If you look at last year's eight point seven five million compared to this year's nine point zero million, it is up. It's up for reasons that we just talked about, but it's only up three point three percent. So your, your core of your teaching in the classroom and seeing kids every day is up just by a, a little bit, you know? It, it's not anything, not to sneeze at, about three hundred thousand dollars, but it is up only about three point three percent. Then we go down to the health, health services, and as you know, there's been some change in that. So the costs have gone down a little bit. And the subs, as well as supplies, that's up there relatively the same going forward.
Steve, why does that necessarily decrease the twenty-fourth?
Because someone retired.
Oh, but I think it's for twenty-three.
No, yes, because what we budgeted in twenty-three, we actually lost. Could we not tell her? Yeah, so we, we, at the time, we budgeted what we thought we might need, and we ended up hiring a possible person for a little bit less than we had planned. And then your assistants are, are two, and you are still quite fortunate to have one of those two be on our end.
Okay, the next page, page eight, is transportation, and that's the three thousand series. As you know, how this works, it's housed here, however, shared amongst all the, the towns. And fifty percent is charged to this line item. There are no real increases in regular transportation, but there is an increase in special ed transportation, as where special ed is a transport award, obviously. So that is where the, the increase occurs. In all, this line item, the total transportation is up about five percent from twenty-two to twenty-four.
And there, there's projected, and we were talking executive session about the status of the negotiations for that group, but we have projected increases there.
Yes, you're showing me, please, or is it showing?
Yeah.
Why did the, the replacement of that?
That's where I was gonna go. This is key. This is key for this year and next, and then a cliff for the year after. So for some reason, it's ironic that during a year when it's very hard to get bus drivers or large truck bike, for some reason, that same year, the cost of new buses is outrageous. So a bus that normally would cost us eighty thousand dollars a piece is up, was a hundred and twenty-five thousand for one this year. So we made the decision early in the year, because we already knew we had some issues in the budget, to just get the one and not do the two. We already had to order the one more for next year, this far ahead, at that same price. So we're gonna have two years of only getting one bus. We'll be okay for just two years. After that, we have got to get back to two a year, is what we've always done. We have a fleet of about twenty, and to replace two a year, giving them the life of ten has worked for us. But it, it's almost a necessity. I mean, it does help us deal with the budget this year. It's a little bit of money to put towards other problems, but we're having a hard time getting, we couldn't get two buses anyway. So that is a decrease that we're gonna need to bring back in fiscal twenty-five, and hopefully prices will settle a little bit so that we can get back to the two.
What do we do with the buses at the time of the month?
We, we, they're, we said, we put them out as trade. So what we've done is every year, we've been getting two, and you give, and trading two. So we get a small amount. We get a few thousand dollars anyway, depending on how many miles we're taking up the buses. So we definitely include that in the packet to get a trade discount.
I have a question. So, so when we look at the budget for bus maintenance and supplies and gasoline, what's the?
Yep, it's gonna, this is a separate lesson you and I need to have, Jackie. Because, no, it is, it is very complicated because of the Tantascwa piece.
Okay.
So technically, Sturbridge pays all the bills. Tantascwa, as you can see here, Tantascwa pays for half of almost every line, plus the late ones, the three thirty and the five. How they do that is they physically, twice a year, Tantascwa puts a check to Sturbridge that sits in a, in a revolving fund, so we spend that first. So we're spending down the Tantascwa half first, and then we'll be getting into the, the regular budget. Okay? We like to make things as complicated as possible in the existing ones. Yeah, and, and then, and the reminder that your specialized transportation, which is certainly gonna be off the charts with all of the new placements we've had this year and next year, but that number includes all the specialized transportation for the buses that come here or go to Sturbridge students, all Sturbridge students that either come here or to the junior high or the senior high, or to any outside placements. It also includes Sturbridge's cost for any homeless transportation that might be required, or foster placements, because the laws require us, if, if a child that was in Sturbridge ends up placed outside of Sturbridge, we have to transport that child back to this, this where they were attending. So that's a, that's a big number. It's a big bucket. It includes.
No limit, no limit to where, like?
Nope. It's a couple of times, once or twice, when they have out of state, we, we wouldn't be responsible. They wouldn't be. We have had them as far as Franklin, we have had an instance, especially this year, where we pushed back with DCF and said, we simply cannot find the people to transfer.
We go into what's called best interest meetings, and, you know, when you're having a best interest meeting of a child, and you're saying, well, you mean that you believe it's in their, their best interest to be on a bus for two hours a day going back and forth? You know, we have some leverage there, and we typically don't get them that they're so far. I think Webster might have been a furthest we've had recently.
Yeah, we, we've had, we've had North Bridge a few times, and Worcester frequently. So whether you call Worcester, Closeville, Webster, I don't know.
And.
But we've got Worcester, Webster, Oxford, and occasionally North Bridge.
Yeah, and oftentimes we have specialized transportation going in that direction anyway.
Yeah.
So we can loop them in onto that.
Right.
But, yeah, so again, it, it, we do have a, a voice at the table. And if it's a really extensive ride, we're usually able to successfully say, that's about the job.
And it, and it could be, and, you know, in the best scenarios, it's, it's within our five towns. So we've got little buses around already scooping children up that make a difference around here this year. Yep, yep.
Okay, page nine, is social services. No significant change from last year to this year.
It's just not up very much because we've had another staff turnover this year, so. But same number of positions. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the, the next section is, you know, that's, that is what it is. You know, they were up in fuel, obviously. Currently, we pay two ninety a gallon, which at the time is drastically high, and that's what it was now. It's not too bad, yeah.
We haven't gone out too big yet for next year. Again, when we built this budget two months ago, we were like, okay, we need to prepare for another ugly hit. I, I don't know. It's going down a little, so maybe by the time we get to public hearing, we will have usually, January, February is when we try to go out, and if it's a number that's decent, we lock into it. If not, sometimes we say no with our weight and go out. We, we join the, we're in Front River Collaborative. So most of your central mass schools are in a collaborative that try to go out together and get the best price. So this, we're hoping is worst-case scenario was us, you know, back in October when things were really bad, we anticipated another hit, close to as bad as this year's hit. So maybe we can go down a little bit, but that's at least our first guess.
When are we locked in for this term, or do you have until?
For, uh, June thirty, yeah.
June thirty.
So certainly if we go out and we get a number bigger, we're gonna be trying to spend every dime we can to top off the tanks, but we might not have the money to do so this year. Because that is usually something we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then electricity looks like it's a little bit snug, so. But, but the town does enter into contracted rates for electricity, and you have net-meeting credits that the town, and the town has energy consultants that include this building's electric bills with all of the other town ones. So we trust them to keep it on their map for us.
One question on school. So I know that probably we haven't paid for that much rule given that we're beginning of the winter, so it looks like at this point we're not over, but you're anticipating that we will be higher than.
Yes, yes, yeah. We're anticipating, and I can't, I'm trying to see what did we actually spend last year? Because I think we might have been a little short last year.
It's last year.
It's gonna be in the summary document that I told you we to ignore. Oh, no, we were lower. We didn't hit it last year. We didn't hit it last year. So I, I think we were projecting to be twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars short this year. And early on, I had said, you've got this enrollment grant, and you've got rural aid that we can use. Then special ed needs exacerbated the problem. But this really is a two-year, it's kind of covering, we're gonna be short this year. The real number this year is probably gonna be more like one twenty to one thirty, although it may not show up, Jackie, on that line if we end up using grant money to, to get there.
I got you.
Yep, all right.
Page ten, no change here, and it's just the maintenance of the rural aid.
There's a little bit of snow, I believe, that's what I thought. And we haven't had enough snow to reduce. It seems like a lot, and I hear like last year, it was obviously the same number, but I don't, I don't feel like we get our money's worth. And why can't the town just do a little?
I always put this out, and you have a new DCF. Well, I always put this out and you have a new DTW director that I'm happy to put out to. It is a bit of a challenge. Sturbridge is the only town of the five towns that doesn't take care of their elementary. They certainly have more roads to take care of. Um but we do go out to bid and we go out for a for a flat rate. Some years, they make out, some years we make out. That also includes sanding. So it's not just the plowing. We've had a number of of ice and we don't hesitate to say, come and sand things. Um it has held for a number of years, which honestly, I think it's gracious of our local vendors who want to try and do their best for us. Um we could certainly go out on an hourly. It's just harder to budget for the hourly and then some years you're gonna go way over and some years you might have a little bit left. I don't think that amount is outrageous considering it also includes sanding. Um we have in the past, and I'm happy again to say to the town, you could take all that money if you would just take care of the school. I think part of the problem is we need to be sure that we're ready to go by the time school opens and that is probably more than they can commit to.
And we are prioritized based on our with our budget. We're we're the first. You know, if I do have some experience with this because it's what my husband did for a living. And if you look at averages over years and the years where, you know, there is twenty fifteen would have been an example of a disastrous year where the the folks made no money. Um so I feel that, you know, it's I don't know that the town would have the ability with all of our roads to do that and to take care of of Burgess to the level that it is taken care of because they do do a really good job.
So this is just Burgess. This isn't any?
This is just Burgess. Just Burgess. Tantascua also contracts out for the two buildings.
Yeah, I I was quite surprised that they were able to maintain because insurance for plowing went through the roof um this past last year.
And getting plow drivers is a challenge.
Yeah.
As nasty OT keeps telling us on our news.
Exactly.
All right. Page eleven here. Um there's actually some good news here. If you look at that top.
Yes.
Where?
This was a little bit of a.
You see that ninety?
And it was at eleventh hour. I'm gonna tell the truth. I had already killed a lot of trees. I already copied this thing twenty times when they said, we missed that number. And I was like, it's going out. We're gonna change it that night. So I think originally that ninety-three was was including some of the projects that you're gonna hear about here. So um and I think it said it's forty.
It should be forty. Yes, the forty. It's forty's the number. So cross off the ninety-three and make that a forty.
See that?
And it should bring it.
Exactly.
It brings us down almost a half of the century, which is something at this point, right?
So with that being forty, there's no change on this page.
But we wanted to give you something to talk about.
And the last page is probably the most interesting. Uh this is where you see the uh.
Oh, just the the projects and we're gonna talk about the capital projects.
Yes, and this is the uh the specialized education tuition and this is where the the bulk of the income is for the children.
So let me give you a little very high level summary um that I shared with with Larry and and keeping in mind, these are public discussions. We try very hard not to. We never ever want to pick a special needs population versus another population. We certainly cannot and will not share data that could in any way expose who these students are, where the students are. Um so I can give you kind of some overall data as I explained to Larry. I think by the end of last year, there were at least two, I think maybe three. There was a new placement in two shifts from what had been a lower level placement to what was gonna be costly before we got out of last school year. And that was when I was like, okay, we're going forward with this two percent budget, but if we're already a bit uncomfortable. In a in an ideal world, we could have handled that in other ways, but then everything hit us. Every supply costs more, utilities cost more. Then, since the start of the school year, there have been six more new placements. Sturbridge students between elementary and secondary. So some elementary, some secondary. We are having across town, across the district, across the state, um a a number of law. Most students are dual diagnosis problems. There are students that have, say, autism and we have been working with them really hard and then mental health starts getting involved and the dual diagnosis bring us to a point where students are just too aggressive for us to be able to handle in-house. Um and and just emotional disorders are 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 becoming a challenge. So we have done everything that we could to work with these students in-house. None of them, we don't believe, are moving. So they are students we were all working with either in-house or in a lower either a grow situation. Um and just could no longer be in that in that area. One, we had a number of years of not having a residential placement. We do have one. Um so that factored in is, you know, that that cost is just astronomical. So those all combined are factored in with what we're trying to deal with this year and what we we sit here. We don't guess that more are gonna be placed. We don't guess how much more it's gonna be um in sending especially with the private. Remember also, we got the bomb dropped on us a month or two ago that the private placements, private facilities, the state granted a unilateral fourteen percent increase on tuitions. So that is factored in on top of these new placements being the private. I can give you some data just for your kind of mental um absorbing of this. So your mass schools, those are all your Union sixty-one. So you know you've got programs here at Burgess, your pathways, your step, your gains.
And and keeping in mind, we pay a tuition to ourselves for those children.
Right. So and then you've got a program in Brookfield and a program in Brookfield. So those mass school, that mass school line is all of your Union sixty-one student placements. There's ten of those plus about fifty students. So I suppose ten plus forty more. Forty more students that get some summer services that we pay for this line. Okay? Your private tuitions, that Mac Daddy number is fifteen. Fifteen Sturbridge students. And your collaborative programs, I think for the most part, they are grow. Um or there's the Southern Worcester County Ed Collaborative there in Dudley is there's five students there. So I'm pretty sure we did the math and I'm gonna do it again on my little. I really have to bring my real calculator because this is just silly. Like I think I gave up my finance in, right? The total tuitions alone are up four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. That is. I'm trying to look at what that is to the current year budget. So that seven point eight percent increase, which is gonna go down a little bit because we knocked fifty-three thousand dollars out of maintenance, um of that seven point eight, three point eight are your out of district tuitions alone. Now, your out of district is not all out of districts. Some of them are here as a bill. But so this is the story we're moving forward with over and over again to your finance folks and your board of selectmen and your town that if we hadn't had that huge shift, some of which is placements, some of which is the state's fourteen percent increase on private tuitions, um we would be looking at a four percent budget, but now that fifty-three thousand will go down point four. So that's seven point eight six. When we adjust that is gonna be more like seven point four, you know, seven point four five. Um and of that seven point four five, three point eight percent is in that one. So I will keep saying over and over.
We keep building progress, right? We keep adding, you know, to to.
Yeah, can you talk a little bit about what we did in-house and with shifting existing staff?
And we've done it before. So those of you who've been around for a while know in that we, you know, when we start started back in twenty fourteen, we had two substantially separate classrooms. We had created pathways one and created pathways two. We then added what we call step, which please don't ask me for the acronym. I can't off the top of my head at the moment. Um and that's sort of our like three-year-old um autism spectrum program primarily that the children have variety of diagnoses, but it was primarily intended to transition children at two point nine or three years to come to the public school because that's what we do in a fashion in which we could get them acclimated, adjusted without putting them in a standing preschool classroom, which was very disruptive and not successful. Um so.
They're not paid tuition preschools and they're they're on an I P or?
Well, no, and I mean, well, we put this. Okay, so great. So for the pathways program, our Sturbridge students, we pay ourselves tuition. The additional programs that we have built, we don't charge our Sturbridge children tuition for. Um but we um do have a number of children from the four other communities which we do take in, which we do get tuition for. So we built the step program. After that, we built the game program, which has shifted in um its its purpose almost every year based on the needs of the children coming into the school. So it's it it's a variety of types of needs within that program. This past year, because we had a large number of children transitioning from preschool slash step into kindergarten that really have a high, high level of need that we created what we call beyond step. So it's sort of like our kindergarten program that there are five, I think now six students work in that classroom. And that's not something reflected here. That is shifting of staff, which we're hoping to shift off of because we're actually struggling in some um social, emotional learning areas and things that we want to try to um to address. But um at this moment, so keeping in mind, we we meet the need. There's thirty-five students within the now five programs that um ten of them are from Union sixty-one. So again, we're 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 tuitioning there. So again, we do keep trying to address the needs at internally as the best we possibly can. As the children get older, older, that gets harder and harder to do. As Deb talked about things about dual diagnoses. So a child who is seven, who's here at Burgess presenting a particular way, we have the ability to manage that. They get older, the aggression may increase and then they become it becomes much more difficult to sustain within our own programs.
Thank you, Larry. I just wanna make sure I understand some parallels of the seven point eight percent of three point eight percent. I don't think you mean three point eight percent of seven point eight percent.
No.
It's more like roughly half.
Yeah, exactly. Yes.
Because otherwise it would get to be.
Yeah, no, I just played with. And again, we're always gonna have fluctuations and increases in the special needs, the tuitions. And years ago, we had a number this big. And then we built programs and many we were able to keep in. Even so, and now a couple of years ago, we had a couple of very expensive residential ones. They aged out. So then we get down and we get down to something that's a little more what we think is manageable and then you get whacked by a few very expensive ones. But when I just replayed with the numbers there, Larry, on the last page, so that seven point eight six percent goes down to seven point four five when we knock out that that error that I just let go. And ignoring that, the the eighteen, the one thousand eight twelve, that line, the increase there of four hundred and eighty thousand is three point six five percent of the current year budget. So in my head, I'm subtracting that three point six five from the seven point, I'm sorry. Um um I think it was was I ended up with a three point six five total. So I forget what number. I think I said, did I say three point eight? I said three point eight. So I subtracted the seven point four five new total. I subtracted the three point eight to get an increase of three point six five if all things were equal in tuitions.
Right.
It's not reasonable to expect all things to be equal, but it's reasonable to be expected to be a bit lower than 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 what it is.
Oh, sure. Now, I've got with really.
So then I start saying, as I will say to my finance friends, let's talk about what's driving that three point six five percent that's left. Some of which is other in-house needs. Some of it is transportation. Utilities is a big challenge.
Sure. Got it. Thank you.
Yep. Um can we just at least let you folks know what our thoughts are from the capital perspective? You got a single page, I think, at the end or separate or something. Um Ashley, Kathy, why don't you run through both your technology and your?
So we have made some adjustments as to what we were, you know, what our hopes and dreams were back a few years ago. So um that one fifty, although it's still large, we were actually um looking more at a figure in the two hundreds. Um we do need to continue replacing um teacher workstations. We the mobile devices, because they do age and we need to replace those. Um smart boards are a big expense and I know folks here can attest to, you know, at twelve years or eleven years there, if they start, they're they're going out at a pretty rapid rate. Um and I do really um hope that we can keep that major infrastructure at sixty-five thousand to to continue because it's what he what's keeping us fully operational at all times. So I would um, you know, that's where we are with technology.
Deal.
I know. Well, that's so that's what we will look in at and we'll get it again.
But but we're not gonna no, we're not gonna stress. They're not going without. No, no, no. The two hundred and ten went down to one fifty.
It did.
Because.
Oh, right.
Remember, we have the final year of ESER three funding coming. And in that, we intentionally put some technology because we didn't want to be all about salaries and then have a huge clip. So that fifty to sixty thousand dollar shortfall, we'll be able to get that technology from ESER.
But um capital for budgetary purposes, that's where we're at.
Yeah.
Um the next is the facilities plan. Um just a cautionary note, you know, as the building ages, things are happening and you can see that in our current our current budget. Um we're looking at a chimney repair, um repointing of the chimney on the lakeside over the cafeteria. We're looking at repainting the south playground. PTO is engaging as in some conversation about helping with some playground repairs. We'll see where we land with that. And then um the electronics for the sinks and the toilets are just going to be a steady um need of replacement over the years.
Kathy, regarding the smart boards.
Mm-hmm.
Is there like what is the vision for? How much more do you need? How many more years will that be a line item or will it just be an ongoing line item?
It should probably be an ongoing and you probably should have set it up as an ongoing six years ago um as we were starting to see them. So it's it's going to be a need that's.
I think you'll have almost full replacement by the end of next year by another year of of ESER. You sure?
We'll see. Um we'll see. We'll see. And and the technology of them has improved and we're not using the projector tech projector style. I don't know. I don't have a good sense of what the longevity of those machines. I'm assuming they're going to be longer because they don't have the same type of equipment.
So that was sort of where I was going is like, how much longer until we replaced everything that was failing?
And and then we start again. I think in a couple of years, we probably replaced all of the initial ones and with the newer technology, which is nice because also over time, our tech staff has actually been a been able to install some things themselves. The the newer technology of smart boards, they can do themselves as opposed. So it is shifting a little bit and by the time we get a handle on it, it'll change again. But yeah, sure, smart boards and Chromebooks are gonna become paper and pens. There's always gonna have to be there.
And just ke- uh keeping in mind, as updates happen, so here's a perfect example. We had to update um our desktops to a more current platform. In doing so, um I don't know if anybody in this group is impacted, the document cameras that we use no longer work with the system that we have. We've gotta work around. We can see where it goes, but as time goes on, those will probably be. We better work around, we can see where it goes, but as time goes on, those will probably necessitate. So the technology, we need to keep a very close eye on our technology, capital plan, and make sure that we're funding it correctly year to year.
Fortunately, the document cameras are much cheaper to do.
Well, and they're not as essential anymore as they were when we first started. We can, you know.
Are you working on a new software program to press bypass?
We're in the middle of that. We're in the middle of that right now. So, and that's covered in here, that's in your central session. So by the end, well, actually soon, if not already, some of your counselors or special ed might be getting involved in the loading of the new software. We ended up with Power School. So by the end of the year, we'll be starting to do training for our staff at the start of the new year.
That was the request for the update. The only reason you was to try to get everybody familiar with it, so we're not starting from scratch and it's a problem.
And then your non-tech items down below.
Yep, we talked about those already.
They're covered all there. So those are our, well, I was going to say hopes and dreams, but for most part, they're, they're the needs to continue with the current service levels. So they're, they're really not increases to add more programs. It's to continue the level of service that we've been giving to the town. And we're going to kind of go through slow and continue to have the conversations that we've had with certainly your boards and keep each other and your town administrator. We're just, it's, it's a tough first round on top of the year from the government point of view in the state. That's a tiny bit stressful. I will say, from the S R point of view, I think this budget, actually, I believe the one support staff, the one instructional increase is something that initially we funded with S R money when we started for this year. So that's a little bit of getting off of the S R ledge. And your English learner teacher is in the budget that originally we were paying for. So I think there's a couple more positions that are still there that we'll have to have a conversation in the year on how we get off of the grant funding. If we need them in the budget, we're coming back with you on it. But the rest of what's in the S R three is at least seventy-five to a hundred thousand in technology money. So that's good. We'll use all that up. And then the year after, I'm hoping that we're going to be in decent shape to then kind of continue with our long-term capital plans. I think, if it weren't for, again, we are not in a position that most other districts are in. I definitely made note, I forget the number, but I think it was a big, I think it was a Mac Daddy of about a million dollars that I saw in October, that the town of Westboro was going to the town for, for special ed out-of-district tuitions. So we certainly are not alone. This is certainly a trend across the state and the country in all matters. It's just a question of how we can get through the next couple of years and see what the government can do to help us fund some of these things. The S R funds worry me a little bit when they go away, but we've certainly been telling the state for a while, we worry about that. And they're not all things that we can just stop doing because the needs haven't gone away. Any other questions on round one? As always, if you come up with questions in the next month that you didn't think to ask, shoot Steve or I an email. We'll have it, we'll, any question we get, we would always respond to all of you or bring to the next meeting. If we have any more information to share with you for the next meeting, we will bring it. If nothing changed at all in the next month, we would be asking you to vote a budget to bring forward to the March public hearing. Remember, that is a budget that you can certainly go down, you would not want to go up. So it's, I typically recommend the highest budget that we could possibly be asking, go to that March public hearing, and then we continue to have the conversations. All righty.
Okay, we are at public access. All right. Subcommittee reports.
You know, I mean, negotiations, we're going to go into executive session, negotiations, subcommittee has to be.
Right. Okay. Tan Taskara Rep, that's me. We did have a meeting right before Christmas, on the twentieth, and it was lovely. We had a music presentation in the auditorium, which was a collaboration of the choral group and the acapella group and the band, and it was great. Very nice. And then we had, we went upstairs to the library, we had lots of treats and soup, and it was very nice. The famous soup, I finally, I didn't have it.
It wasn't quite the same soup as was talked about years ago. It was still delicious, but wasn't the exact same one, so.
Well, a lot of good-looking cookies there to kick off the meeting.
Colorary arts providing refreshment.
Yep. We started off with the announcement of the superintendent's scholar recipients. It was Lily Erhard and Zoe Xu. Lily Erhard with a four point eight-seven, I wrote this down GPA, I don't know if that's possible, but yep, obviously top of her class, and Zoe coming in with a four point eight-four GPA. So yeah, a couple of very lovely, super duper smart young ladies with all kinds of good things ahead of them, I'm sure. Just a matter of where they decide to go. Let's see, we have student reports, talking about the successful holiday activities that went on in the community, that school enrichment and activities after school and within school are very active and flourishing, and everyone's enjoying all of that. The tech school mentioned that they have the highest number of co-op participants, with twelve students who are actually like, have a J O B and can go out and work during the school day, which I think is really cool. We talked about, there was a mention and an ask of the committee to approve a Mediterranean post tour for a group of students. And we talked about that quite a bit. I just thought it was interesting to share that, as you may have the same reaction that most of us did, was like, how does this tie into the education? And what's the plan for, you know, for fundraising for students so that it's, they need chaperone?
I know. Well, it is the first, we've certainly had out-of-the-country trips before. It's certainly the first one post-COVID. So, you know, that kind of leaves folks a little bit concerned, but more, it's been a number of years since anyone has come forward and know you have a new principal and new staff that don't know what questions have been asked in the past and what concerns have been asked. And it's a pretty pricey trip. So the request is for April twenty twenty-four. So the request is certainly early enough that they would, they want to have fundraising opportunities for kids. But the school committee had really good questions and concerns, so voted, kind of put it on hold for a month. I think things will come back in January. But I think some of the concerns are, tell us exactly what kind of fundraising you're going to offer that has every kid truly having the opportunity to do this, and not just kids that can afford to pay out of pocket. And that's, that is something that we should be very concerned with. There certainly was, there's always questions about chaperones and chaperones paying or not paying. Certainly, the main facilitator, the teacher who's trying to sponsor this trip, is doing a ton of work, and they typically get the trip not, you know, paid for. The other chaperones, there was conversation about them, that some trips in the past have gone for free and others they are paid, some anyway. And then I think it was a little bit odd, it's, it's April vacation, which again, we've often had those, and the school committee, you know, you're, they're looking for school committee approval, which therefore sort of puts school committee in a little bit, you know, owns this, accepts this. And from a liability point of view, I don't know that they would miss any school. I would challenge that there's going to be a last-minute request for either a day before or a day after because of traveling. One day out for field trips for kids is certainly not common. But it was a little bit, I think folks initially were like, wait a minute, and I needed to think through it myself. It happens to be a math teacher who is offering to put on this trip. Now, there's no question that in the trip, there will certainly be educational value around the arts, around, around the languages. And it just typically in the past, it's been a science teacher that says, I want to take these kids to Costa Rica. Or it's been the music teacher that says, we're going to go sing and tour Europe. It just didn't happen to be a social studies or English teacher that said, I'm willing to do this. So is the curriculum there? Sure. Is it necessarily by the teacher, what that teacher teaches? Not so much, so that took a little bit to question and understand.
I can come up with some stuff. We'd like to see like tied alignment to curriculum, you know.
You have someone who wants to give kids opportunities, and these opportunities are absolutely fantastic. I've seen them before. I have chaperoned them before. I have seen kids have an opportunity that they would never have otherwise when done the right way with the right fundraising. And those were some of the questions that were left. So it will come back again, I think, in January to try and hash out a little bit more.
Yeah, it's definitely, it felt a bit premature and not well thought out. And I think our questions were good, to your point, and hopefully they'll sharpen their pencils and go back and get some more information to help kind of sell us on it. Certainly, it is a great experience. Who wouldn't want to go? But, you know, it was like, with all the things lying back. So yeah, all in all, a good meeting, and what better place would you want to be on the Tuesday or Thursday?
I know. It really did start off awesome.
It really kicked it off. It was lovely. They have the treats and the kids.
Nothing better than meeting those kids.
Okay, we have unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business?
I have none. And we have a void shutting policy in front of you for another one?
I know. There's a lot coming, just from the Tan Taskara.
There are some coming.
They all trickle down.
But we certainly weren't going to be putting them out in the budget, so we'll probably put some in front of you.
That sounds good. Okay. Anyone have any new business?
So then, you, actually, the chair literally will read that we want to enter executive session. Read that section, and then you to roll call.
Right. Okay, so we will move into executive session now. Request to enter executive session under N G L Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to elective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chief so declares. The committee will adjourn from the executive session. Two E, yes. I mean, C E S, eight A S.
And we'll take a little recess while.
Well, we know when we're not.